We're ready now. We're live.
Thank you. Yes, I'm looking for particular here we go participants. Okay, thank you. Here we are. It is now 6:11. I will call the general meeting of August 19th to order. And Vice Chancellor Mitch Bailey, if I can have the roll call please. Oh, I should do the pledge first. I always miss that. Sorry. Let's do the pledge first in order. Thank you. Well, here we are. Oh, there we are.
There we go.
There it is. Okay, what a beautiful flag. Okay, everybody, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, if we could have a roll call, please. Vice Chancellor Bailey.
President Schwartz?
I'm here.
Vice President Duras?
Here.
Trustee Goodman?
Here.
Trustee Halliburton?
Here.
Trustee Mendelkern?
Here.
Student Trustee Jeanette?
I'm here.
Also in attendance are Chancellor Claire, Kenyatta College President Moore, Sterling College President Moreno, College of San Mateo interim president Lopez, Chief Financial Officer Slater, and District Academic Senate President Wallace.
Thank you. There are no, excuse me, there are no actions to report from closed session. We will go to discussion of the order of the agenda. Staff has recommended that Agenda Item 20-8, 3C, a discussion on a formation of San Mateo Athletic Club Advisory Group, excuse me, be moved as the first item to follow statements from the public on non-agenda items. Is this agreeable with the board?
Yes.
Thank you. Three more. Okay, very good. Thank you. Would the board like to make any other edits to the agenda? Hearing none, we will go down to statements from executives and our student trust students. Chancellor Claire, if you start your executive report, please.
Sure. Well, thank you so much, President Schwartz, and good evening, Board of Trustees and those others in attendance. I felt, I feel we had an interesting opening day this year, and I appreciate those of you that were able to log on. We had, I think, over 700 people in attendance for the district-wide opening day. And we, as you know, we decided to keep it fairly streamlined, otherwise the Zoom calls get a little long. I appreciate the feedback. I got some really nice notes from folks in terms of, you know, what I see as priorities for the next year. And I was also able to attend, very briefly, CSM's opening day. And also, for a bit longer, I was able to attend Skyline's opening day. And I really want to do a shout out to Professor Danielle Powell, who I emailed her later and told her, she was the keynote speaker. It was really the best keynote address that I've ever heard for one of her opening days. And I've got 33 of them now under my belt. She just did a wonderful job. So anyway, I appreciate the fact that we're off to an interesting start this year. As you know, we had to make the decision to close our campuses due to the smoke situation. I briefed the board and the reason why we actually had to shut the gates is we did not want our public safety personnel out in the field in terms of running a checkpoint because we have to do COVID-19 tracing. I've heard some concerns about getting, the students were scheduled to pick up some resources. And I've heard some concerns that, you know, how are we going to handle that? So I've been working with the college presidents, and if it looks like we're going to be in this for a while, we will come up with alternatives so that students can stay on track. I'll keep the board posted on that. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the college presidents. And if any of the college presidents have anything they'd like to report, I guess we start with Dr. Moreno, Skyline College President.
Thank you. It's just a pleasure to be here and taking the lead. And we had just a marvelous opening day. And, you know, I've heard so much feedback about how it's the best opening day ever, and we pulled it off virtually. So I'm very excited that we're off to a great start.
Acting President Lopez?
Just, we also had a wonderful opening day. We had a great attendance, considering the virtual nature of the world that we're in right now. And yeah, we're excited. So really, nothing more to add, but it's nice to have its first day of the fall semester. Again, we're facing yet another crisis, but I feel like, I feel like we're ready. I think we're ready. We can do this. We're going to get through this. So happy to be here.
Thank you. Acting President Lopez, Dr. Moore?
Good evening. Thank you, President Chancellor Claire. Kenyatta College had a wonderful opening day as well. We had 200 in attendance, and we also just kicked off to, to have a very intense conversation and support of our Black Lives Matter movement, critical conversations on race. Also, our guests, our keynote speaker was Judge Antoinette Morris out of Southern California, one of the youngest judges within Southern California, recently appointed. She shared her story as a UC Berkeley alumni and graduate of Whittier College. She shared her story of making it through the process and being second-guessed every step of the way, and how she really kind of overcame a lot of obstacles, the students and the staff. A lot of the staff and faculty really enjoyed her sharing stories of overcoming barriers and becoming successful. So enjoy the opening day. Look forward to a very prosperous fall semester. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. CFO Slater?
No, no updates. Thank you.
Thank you. And District Academic Senate President Wallace?
I just wanted to say welcome back to everybody, although it doesn't feel like we ever left. It's the same group of folks I've been on Zoom with for the last, like, three months. Every other, no, just kidding. You all are great. But I'll just say, you know, welcome back to all the faculty, staff, administrators who did get to have a summer off. So look forward to the academic year.
And I'll vouch for Jeremy because I think we talked Sunday night, if I'm not mistaken, Saturday or Sunday night, I can't remember, about something. I don't even remember what we talked about, but it's true. It's not been a summer break, I don't think, for many. I don't see that we have a, the students literally first day back to school today, and I don't see that we have a student report. And so that concludes our executive report. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, other representative groups, is there anybody from the AFT Local 1493 who would like to make any announcements?
We do have a hand raise, President.
Michael Hoffman?
Yes, hello.
Hello.
I'm going to make an announcement from the AFT Contract Action Team.
Okay.
One moment. My name is Michael Hoffman, and I teach mathematics at Kenyatta. I've worked in the district for 13 years. I was both a part-time and a full-time instructor. And I've also been working for Student Equity and helping to organize alongside with students on various issues for several years. Our union, AFT 1493, is fighting tirelessly for the improvement of working conditions for all faculty, full and part-time. While negotiations around the settlement of our contract and the MOU have been essential for faculty, we believe that the struggle for justice for faculty needs, that the struggle for justice for faculty and students needs to be enhanced by more intentional efforts focused on anti-racism and anti-sexism. Some AFT members are currently working on the creation of an Anti-Oppression/Social Justice Committee with the aim of creating a space for members to openly discuss, identify, and address racial and gender oppression in our workplaces, and take collective action to redress it. As a committee, this group will make connections between the racial and gender oppression that affects our students and their communities, and the experiences of our own faculty, who are also often marginalized, diminished, and treated unfairly. We are aware that our three colleges are making efforts to advance social justice and educational equity for students. AFT's goal is that our work with the newly-formed Anti-Oppression and Social Justice Committee will amplify those efforts, those efforts to transform students and faculty members' experiences on our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anybody from CSCE? Annette Perro?
To welcome everyone back to the start of the new academic year. And CSCE continues to work to finalize our COVID MOU. And we work also to, with the district, to continue to work on our contract and see if we can get that finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Anybody from ASME? Okay, we will move into statements from the public on non-agenda items. If there are any statements, I'm going to remind the public there is a three-minute or 20-minute rule. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom should use that raise hand function in the bottom right corner of the screen. Members will be called upon to speak. I see one hand raised here. It is Tim, let me see if I have my magic list here. Tim Chow, right? Chow? And you're the first speaker? Go ahead.
Actually, Lily Chen is the first speaker.
Yes. Okay, you want me to call from my list so that I make it easier?
Yeah.
And yes, Lily Chen would be the first speaker, please. Is she connected, or?
Not the first speaker. Lily's the first speaker, so I called on the wrong person.
Okay, Lily Chen, I'm waiting for her. I haven't heard from her yet. There she is.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. We are the Churn family, SMAC members since 2010. My two children are on the BSC Competitive Swim Team. BSC is a year-round youth aquatics club managed by EXOS and includes a competitive swim team. Majority of BSC members are not SMAC members. They pay monthly dues ranging from $93 to $225 per swimmer. That is why Aquatics Club is the second-largest revenue source for SMAC. Board of Trustees, the reason that BSC families are speaking here tonight is that, as a community, we demand transparency, equity, and access to the pool. From recent events, it is clear that EXOS does not care to address these issues with the community. For example, on March 11th, EXOS emailed Aquatics Family that as of March 12th, there's a freeze on any auto billing since the pool is closed. On March 26th, EXOS asked SMAC members to support SMAC staff with the option of supporting full dues, half dues, or to freeze. On the same day, EXOS also asked aquatic club members to separately support aquatic staff with the same option. Essentially, EXOS created two separate de facto opt-in programs to support itself since BSC participants and SMAC members had to actively freeze their accounts. Both emails further represented when we are able to reopen, all active BSC participants and active SMAC members will have access. The board has copies of both emails. On May 31st, San Mateo County approved pools to reopen. On July 7th, EXOS announced to BSC families that pool reopening on July 13th is only to SMAC members and college students, which excludes anyone under 18. On July 14th, Diana Thomas had a BSC parent Zoom meeting where she represented that she will evaluate the pool usage after two weeks, and that the ultimate decision-makers are the trustees. Only at this meeting did we learn of the resignation of our aquatics director and SMAC general manager. As you're aware, BSC parents recently petitioned Diana Thomas to provide pool access, and she provided no definitive answers until now. Today, around 5:00 PM, we received news that 15 lanes will be reserved to BSC during student hours. This is a start, but more cooperation by EXOS is needed. Please let the kids swim.
Thank you. Next on my list is Tim Chow. Chow?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tim Chow. I am the father of two members of the Bulldog Swim Club. The SMAC pool has been closed to BSC members since the start of shelter-in-place. Just about an hour ago, we were notified that the pool would be available to BSC. Although this is a step in the right direction, it is insufficient. The time they offered our kids is 1:00 to 4:00 PM, starting on September 1st. By then, all kids would have started school and, at best, would be able to use the pool from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, just one hour a day. As a matter of equity, the members of BSC need pool time that they can utilize. SMAC is a community resource and not a private club. It was funded based on state bond measures, which as taxpaying residents, we are paying for in addition to the aquatic and SMAC membership fees. However, accessibility has always been limited, and even more so now. Our youth has been inordinately affected by the shelter-in-place order, with very few outlets to cope with the disruption. As you will hear from some of the swim team speakers later, they need to swim. We understand students should have priority, but it does appear that the pool has been underutilized, and BSC members must be given pool time that can actually be used. In addition, a number of parents, some who are not even SMAC members, are paying voluntarily to support the facility, pool, and coaches because they are invested in the community around the swim club. This is no small expense. As one example, a family with three kids on the team is paying $400 per month just for the swim club. That is on top of the membership fee for SMAC. This family alone has spent a couple thousand dollars while the pool has been completely closed to them. How long should families be expected to pay for something that they cannot use? Sure, EXOS can say that pool time is available for BSC, but now parents are forced to make a choice between pulling kids out of school or having them swim. EXOS needs to work with us to find a solution. We believe in the mission of SMAC. We pay fees gladly to support that mission, the students and the staff. But our kids need to be considered a part of the SMAC community that they've been a part of for so long, and they should be allowed to swim. Although the coaches have been wonderful during the time, given the circumstances, we need a solution. Please let our kids swim. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sam Chouang.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the board, for lending us a voice to advocate for our children in their return to the pool. My name is Sam Chouang. I am currently a resident of San Mateo County and a member of SMAC. I have $3 in the age group competitive program, just swimmers who have reached elite-level competitions on their way to national status. I am part of the masters program as well, and I'm a lifelong swimmer. My family and I have been members of SMAC since 2014. We are also longtime members of the PGA-CC and have access to the Bay Club. I'm here to speak to the current and possible future lane allocations that would allow for our children to resume practice. I prepared some research on the current lane allocations. These are based on one swimper lane per hour. There's a total capacity at the pool of 2,366 lane hours per week. Currently, 1,300 of those are general membership, 156 to the seniors, and then 312 to the students, total of 1,768 lane hours. A pool is closed all day Friday from 2:00 PM and end from 2:00 PM on the weekends. That's a total of 520 hours of potential capacity, not counting the food bank hours from 11:00 to 2:00 PM on Fridays. That's more than 20% of overall usage that could otherwise be utilized. The pool is also wholly unutilized during the designated student hours, Monday to Thursday, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Out of the 312 lane hours that have been allocated to the students, there have been occasions where the pool have been completely empty, not uncommon for only a handful, maybe two or three people to be swimming in the pool at those times, while maintaining seven people on staff. That's over 300 hours of capacity in just four days that could have otherwise been used for either the swim club or members in general in our community. EXOS has maintained that the club is an 18-and-over facility. They have also used our children's lack of key tags as a hindrance to the response plans and as a way to deny access of our children to the pool. The argument is irrelevant. The quality of this program, not counting masters swimming, is composed of hundreds of children, all under the age of 18, most of which have already been assigned key tags to stream on the checking process. This convenient excuse of over 18 has been used over and over again by EXOS to deny our children access to adequate facilities such as changing rooms or working showers during normal operation times throughout the years. And now, access to the pool itself serve their own corporate self-interest, financial or otherwise. And just today, on the 11th hour before our presentation, they chose to undermine us again by proposing a return of our kids to the pool during student hours from 1:00 to 4:00, knowing full well that our children are attending school online during most of that time. There is a simple truth: SMAC is not a private club. It is a community resource paid for and funded by us, the taxpayers, just like the community college. Please let our children back in the pool. Thank you for your timing consideration.
Thank you. Jennifer Dean?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Dean. I'm a mother of three daughters, all of whom are swimmers on the Bulldog Swim Club. I'm also a physician. And while I did my training at Stanford, I would consider College of San Mateo my other alma mater. Not only has our family spent many hours poolside at CSM, but I've also taken several classes at CSM. We in healthcare have learned a lot about COVID since the lockdown of March. We certainly don't know everything, but we can be more confident now about how the virus is transmitted, and importantly, how it is not transmitted. The CDC website states, "There is no evidence that COVID-19 can be spread to people through the use of water and pools." To reassure myself and my family, I performed a literature search, and I found no confirmed outbreaks stemming from a swim club or pool to date. Our ask is that our Bulldog Swim Club be allowed to access the pool for the purpose of lap swimming during hours outside of school time. Lap swimming is exactly what our masters team has been doing for the past several weeks, very safely, without any issues. We've all been living with COVID for almost six months now, and we, including our kids, are all very familiar with the rules of social distancing. As parents, we are confident that our kids can follow these rules, and we will sign legal waivers if presented with them. Our coaches are ready with proposals for safe lap swimming within the recommended guidelines. Almost every city in our county has a pool already allowing access to youth for lap swimming. Santa Clara County, the original hotspot county of COVID, has swim teams swimming. This past Monday afternoon, I stopped by CSM to pick up my daughter's swim gear. Out of the 26 swim lanes, only three people were in the water swimming, three people. There were more staff sitting around the pool than swimmers in it. Since the lockdown in March, my family has paid almost $2,000 in dues towards the aquatics programs and also our gym membership. Exactly where did our money go to maintain an empty pool now? San Mateo County's pool guidelines came out in July with no age restrictions. It's almost September, and our kids are still not swimming. We understand that the board relies on accurate feedback to know what is happening with SMAC. Please, I urge you, take a look at yourselves at the empty pool. Please help fulfill SMAC's promise of giving all community members, including the youth, access to the pool. Let's use the successful models of our neighboring pools that are serving both youth and adults safely. Please, direct EXOS to let our club swim now and at reasonable hours, not during the school day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Conrad Churn?
My name is Conrad Churn. I'm 11 years old. I have been swimming at the CSM pools for 10 years, since they opened in 2010, starting with family swim, swim lessons, and moving through the competitive Silver Advanced Bulldog Swim Team. Not only has the year-round swim program provided me with exercise and a love of sport, but more importantly, I have met many dedicated coaches and swim friends from throughout the San Mateo County, kids from Milbrae, Burlingame, Hillsborough, San Mateo, Belmont, San Carlos, Redwood City, Foster City, and Woodside. My swim friends and coaches are the reason I swim during the foggy, blustery, cold, windy, and downright miserable afternoons during the winter. We encourage each other to work harder, swim faster, and be better swimmers, proudly representing CSM and the Bulldog Swim Team at swim meets. As the result of the pool closure with COVID-19, I realized the following: one, that I miss being in the water; two, that swimming provides a healthy activity and purpose; and that in-person interactions are much more rewarding than over Zoom, and that is what I miss most of all. Board of Trustees, please let us swim. Thank you.
Thank you. Eden Chang?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Eden. I have been swimming at Bulldog Swim Club since I was seven, and I'm the current athlete representative. Today, I'm going to inform you on how not allowing us to swim is harmful to our mental health and overall well-being. Our mental health is declining and has been for the last five months. Mental health is vital but has rapidly decreased due to the restlessness and uncertainty of when we will be able to swim again. Zoom had sustained it for a while, but there's only so much you can do on Zoom. The phrase commonly known as Zoom fatigue started to set in for us athletes as well as coaches. Sitting at the computer screen for an absurdly unhealthy amount of time and doing similar activities and workouts for five months straight gets boring, to say the least, not to mention the lack of social interaction and only getting to see your friends once a week at a lagoon. Furthermore, with most schools opening up only online, it will be even more challenging to have crucial in human interaction we all need. Opening up the pool to BSC swimmers will allow athletes to see and talk to each other, social distance, of course, but will further boost our mental health. As swimmers, in-water exercise is required to keep us fulfilled. Although land exercise is essential and necessary, it is only advantageous to a certain extent. For example, I can run more than eight miles but can barely swim more than 100 butterfly, not even to mention a 200. Drowling is crucial to maintain physical health and to build strength, but swimming is in water. The only way you become truly, become a better swimmer, especially at this age, is by swimming. It is hard to keep coming and participating in Zoom drownings when we have no apparent reason to continue. We are not allowed to swim, and there's no guarantee we'll be able to in the foreseeable future, with no specific indication on when we will be allowed to swim at this faculty again. It is hard to not have a what's the point mentality. Lastly, it is hard to look past the fact that most teams are back in the water and have been swimming for months now. At an athlete representative meeting I attended, 37 of the 44 athletes are participating or swimming, and their clubs are open and functioning. Clubs are adhering to strict COVID-19 protocols and will deal with any instances of infection as they may occur. We are competitive swimmers, and just to be clear, we are not a recreation team. We are serious about swimming. We train year-round in all types of weather, whether it is light or dark outside, we still do it. We go to swim meets, sacrifice our weekends and social life for swimming. Many different plans are working for numerous clubs already, while there's little effort getting age-old swimming back in the water here. I and many others recognize that this is a primarily 18-and-over facility. However, we are also part of this community, and would ask you to take action in creating a realistic plan and allowing both a swimming club to operate and swim again. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Hinaka? And I'm not even going to try to put your last name. Hinaka, are you there?
Hinaka, could you please raise your hand?
Hinaka, could you please raise your hand?
Here we go.
Can you hear me?
I, we can hear you very well. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Hinako, a BSC gold team swimmer. And I want to talk about how I, along with my teammates, can and will follow safety protocols as outlined by CDC and any additional procedures that BSC may propose. Most of us have been doing lap swimming at various different pools along the peninsula. We have also been doing open water swims at the Foster City, at the Foster City Lagoon. During these times, we have been practicing social distancing and safety protocols in the following ways. We have been wearing our masks when we are not swimming, having limited conversation amongst ourselves, and maintaining a safe distance between us and others around us. Additionally, according to the San Mateo County Health Department, there is no current age restriction for lap swimming, which means that it is not a legality issue for kids under the age of eighteen to use the pool for recreational lap swimming or for team practices. And I understand that SMAC is a primarily eighteen or older facility, but I, I asked for you guys to consider opening up to the whole community instead of gatekeeping it to just the adults. And I believe that we can all make compromises here and there so that SMAC can serve the adults first while still finding time and space for BSC to swim. And from what I've heard, there's a lot. I understand that the safety of those older than us on the team is important, which is why I think that as long as the seniors swim at a different time than the swim team, the spread of COVID-19 could be as limited as possible. Finally, I'd like to emphasize that BSC is a competition team and taking six months off of team practice can take a huge toll on our performance going forward. I'm confident that with the right adult supervision and continued extra precautions, health and safety for ourselves and of others who are swimming will not be an issue. We will strive to act in a responsible manner and always make community safety our priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Wells. Amy, you need to unmute yourself. But you won't hear me because you have muted.
Okay, can, can you hear me?
We can hear you very well.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Amy Wells. I am the mother of Riley Wells, who's nine years old, who has been swimming since six months of age and competitively with BSC since 2018. We came to BSC and found more than just a swim team. We found a community and a swim family. Riley started out in the blue one group, but quickly progressed and moved up where she is now in the silver group. Her progress is due to the amazing and supportive coaches we have had along her journey. These coaches have taken these kids under their wings and provided more than just swim drills to our children. Riley has made friends within the swim team and enjoys swimming tremendously. The competitive meets have helped her with her confidence and has allowed her to shine. Riley was born to swim and loves the water, as does these other children. She has five other activities and yet swimming is her favorite. Her commitment to swimming amazes me. What kid will get into the water when it's fifty degrees outside and the wind is blowing at CSM? This goes for all the kids on the BSC team. Rain or shine, these kids are committed to swimming and this team. At this point, Riley would love to just get in the water, as would all the other kids, even if it's just one day a week. As a mother and a nurse, I am well informed of the coronavirus and the health regulations. I am also well aware of the impact, not only physically, but more importantly mentally, to our children not being able to swim. I'm asking you to please consider working with the team and the parents to find a way to get our kids back into the pool. We are flexible and willing to collaboratively work alongside whomever we need to in order to get our kids back in the pool. Many of us have a number of ideas of ideas of how we can do this. I would love to just be heard and supported as we have supported CSM and BSC through the last five months. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, that is the end of the list that I was received, but I do see that we have a hand raised. Karen Clark from the Bulldog Swim Club.
My name is, my name is Karen Clark. I'm twelve years old and I'm a member of the Bulldog Swim Team. Please let us swim after school again. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see another hand raised. Lane Poms, you wanted to speak on this issue?
Yes, I want to encourage the Bulldog swimmers and their parents to stay on a little bit longer because we're going to be speaking on a related matter. So please stay on.
Thank you. Okay, as I explained to Jennifer Dean when she sent me the list of speakers tonight, this is a section on the agenda that we don't have back and forth from the board, but we certainly do listen. And I'm going to take president privilege and just ask if Diana Thomas would mind just telling us what the latest response was to these members so that we would have a better picture maybe of what is going back and forth. Diana?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. First of all, thank you everybody for your participation, your passion for all of how this has affected you as we've all dealt with this. I wanted to correct a couple of things. One, the letter that went out did provide options for our Bulldog Swim Team members. And those options were to support the SMAC staff at all levels, which through the generosity of the swim parents and also through the members, allowed us to continue to do through the month of June. July and August were complimentary. We did not take those monies without providing services. So I will totally congratulate Megan and her team for offering an extremely robust program to the Bulldog Swim Team members from a virtual basis inclusive of concerts where the children played their instruments, movie nights, cooking classes, coached workouts, land classes. So those were in existence through the entire time. Exos is the entity that manages San Mateo Athletic Club and Bulldog Swim Club. I started my career as a children's phys ed teacher. It was important for me to bring children's programming to CSM and to SMAC, and we did so with the children's swim program. We are mandated to be an adult-only facility indoors and we've offered the swim program outdoors. And as time progressed, we took over as much real estate as we could to create family changing rooms and outdoor restroom and aquatics offices. What we've also done during this period of time is we did meet with the Bulldog Swim Team parents in the middle of July. At that point, we had just received permission to reopen and we had done so. We were tracking the usage and the hours across the board and we had a plan in place that we were ready to approach the county health department on. The county health department is the one that sets the standards by which we follow. And that standard is one person per lane. There is no indication whether that's an adult or a child. With that one person per lane edict, we thought we would have a plan that we could present to potentially allow for two to three children per lane after we were open two weeks. Unfortunately, that coincided with the anticipation that we would be back on the county watch list and we would subsequently have to close the indoor offerings. That happened. We felt that was not the appropriate time to petition the health department to see if there was any exemptions or exceptions that could be made. Nor did we feel it was appropriate to represent the Bulldog Swim Club as a camp because we are not a camp and to try to create or augment or pretend that we were under the auspices of gaining some type of extra access would be wrong. The master swim team is not in the water. They are not being coached. The master swimmers, along with all of the adult members of SMAC, are making reservations and swimming three times per week, which is our cap. We did lift that cap this week due to inclement weather, due to the thunderstorms and the lightning strikes, and now also the air quality. The other issue we had is we were expressly asked to make sure that access to the facility was by those individuals over the age of eighteen for the basic responsibility we had of self-attestation and acknowledging and accepting the responsibility that they were symptom-free and COVID-free. We did not have the ability nor the capacity to account for all of those children plus their parents on the pool deck as we are capped with the number of people that can be in that space at any given time. We closely monitored the student hours and the student use of said. And yes, there was not a lot of use, but we did not feel it's fair or prudent to adjust those hours until at least a month had gone by to make sure that we gave it a fair shot. Earlier this afternoon, we received information that we were able to adjust the student hours and we could allow for our BSC team to return to the pool, one student, one swimmer per lane between the hours of one to four. At that point, a survey that we had formulated over the past few weeks was then sent to the parents to query as to the access, as to the timeframe, as to whether or not the parents could guarantee that the child would be dropped off by the parent and the parent could pick up the child and maintaining as much safety and precautions as we could. It was indicated that there is some type of flexibility in our college's ability to create policy around COVID and around lane access. That is not. We are following what the health department guidance allows and the eighteen and over was strictly due to self-attestation and acceptance that they were symptom-free and children as minors cannot make that statement nor sign for their health and well-being. We are excited and we recognize that the timing was a little bit compromised coming out today, but literally within ninety seconds of that approval, we contacted our head coach and our regional aquatics director. I hope that I've answered all of your questions. We're definitely planning to have the Bulldog Swim Team return to the water. That will be the only coached program we will have on the deck. We recognize those hours may not be as convenient for individuals. We are truly hoping that as the health department recognizes some of the standards that are being met in our county and surrounding counties and now those guidelines are relaxed, we can extend the student and the swimmer use per lane and potentially review other operating hours. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, board members, since we have heard from both sides of the issue, so to speak, I'm going to ask the administration, our chancellor, to give us in the future some kind of a response after hearing both of this that we feel that the district would like to make public at a future time if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. As I said, we do not talk back and forth on these things, so I'm going to move on if that's acceptable to the rest of the board. I hear, didn't see any head nods, so away we go. Thank you. Thank you for all the speakers and thank you for your interest in coming and sharing with us your situation. We are now down to new business on twenty-eight three C. A discussion on the formation of the San Mateo Athletic Club Advisory Group. The board has received the communication included in the published package from a group of individuals interested in the development of an advisory group for SMAC. Frank Elliott, who is a member of that group, will speak on this issue. And I think maybe, I don't know, the chancellor, no, we'll let Frank speak first. Okay, Frank? There he is.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you very well.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for giving me an opportunity. This has been a fascinating meeting. We have not been in touch with the Bulldog Swim Club people. And it's very interesting to hear that they share some of the concerns that we share from a slightly different perspective. And so I think, you know, it's a relief that other people are thinking the same way that we are thinking. And I think it helps to also make the point that we need more transparency, we need more communication between the SMAC members and I would add the Bulldog Swim Club people, between us, staff, and college staff, and the board of trustees. There just needs to be better communication. And so in that regard, I just ask that we get more communication in general about what's about any developments that are going on with SMAC. And so we know that the contract with Exos is currently under review, going out for bid. I think it would be helpful if all SMAC members were notified directly as to what's happening there. So that's, that's one recommendation. I think the letter that we sent also pretty much speaks for itself. And we have gratefully had a chance to talk with almost all of the trustees. And I really think we are pretty much aligned in terms of what our goals are and we actually learned something through that process. We think there's a way to leverage this club for the benefit of both us, SMAC members, and for the students of the college in terms of possible apprenticeships and so forth. So I, I don't need to, I don't feel like I need to repeat everything in the letter. I just want to say that I really urge you to consider, with the board, to consider developing an advisory committee and how that is shaped and how that's done is, if I would defer to the board, the best way to do that. We, as a steering committee, would like to be part of that process to figure out how to form that and how to make that work so it's efficient and effective for everybody and, you know, in terms of getting representation for everybody. Not just the master swimmers, not just the Bulldog Swim Club members, but also people that attend classes, people that use the use the workout equipment, et cetera. So I kick it back to the board of trustees. Hopefully, it's pretty clear that this is something that needs to be done. I think the last thing you want to do is be hearing us all choke at your meetings and, and, you know, ask for more service. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Any other members from the community that would like to speak on this agenda item? I don't see any hand raised. Any board members who'd like to comment on this agenda item? Trustee Mandelkeren?
I, I think it's a terrific idea. I had the opportunity to talk with a number of members of various groups that use SMAC and encouraged all of them along the same line. I think it's sort of high time that the users of SMAC had a voice in the process. And I would encourage, you know, Mr. Elliott and your advisory group to actually take the lead in establishing this kind of advisory group because I think it will be stronger if it's actually independent of the district and the administration and the Exos management. I think you want to have a truly independent voice that represents the users, not another voice representing the management of the club or the administration of the college or the board of trustees for that matter. I would, I would really value hearing the input of the users of this club as we make these decisions. It would be very helpful if there was an organized channel that that input and that communication could flow back to the board from the users of SMAC. So I encourage you and support you and go for it.
Thank you, trustee Mandelkeren. Any other trustees like to comment on this item? Trustee Oliver?
I think trustee Mandelkeren said almost exactly what my thoughts were. Makes sense. We want to hear from the community members that are using the facility. It also makes sense for the members to organize themselves, but, you know, so I guess there are technical questions on, you know, formally recognizing a particular group or not, but I think if the, if the board sees this as a valuable thing, maybe those formalities don't become insurmountable or, you know, requirements. But certainly we should be hearing directly from, from the folks who are using the club.
Any other board members? Vice President Neuris?
Thank you, Madam President. I also had the pleasure of meeting with a group of the members from SPAC, the advisory board. And I was, I was pleased to see that everyone seemed to have a very positive approach to what's going on there. And I think that the advisory board, whatever, whatever shape it takes at this point, is something that it's appropriate to have at this particular time. I don't necessarily think I heard from anyone that they felt that they, you know, that the past has been some kind of insurmountable problem or whatever, but that it's just time right now where we're at a point where we need to share more information and have more input from the community and from members as well. And so I think that's, that's the reason for this particular board. Whether it be formed independently of the district or the administration is something that I don't necessarily have a position on. I would like to see that the members of the advisory board meet with the administration to talk about it and to see what they feel is the best way to go. And to have something that is collaborative as far as that comes. I'm not interested and I don't think the members are interested in having groups, basically, so one can confront the other. It's a matter of collaboration. That's what I was hearing all along. And so I would like that collaborative effort to begin and with our administration to talk with the advisory board, with the with the group that, that addressed us. with the advisory board, with the group that addressed us and see what they think is the best way to move forward, and then report that back to the board.
Thank you. Trustee Goodman?
Yes, I don't disagree at all. I definitely appreciate the group and having the opportunity to speak with them and listen to the concerns. I agree 100% there needs to be not just a representative voice, but additional transparency. And so, but one of the concerns I do have is that of AB 1725, making sure that possibly we could create seats on an already formed AB 1725 committee, whether it's, I don't know, District Auxiliary Services Committee, and have the group still be able to meet as representatives from SMAC outside of any type of connection with the district, but have an official non-voting seat or positions on an already formed shared governance committee within the district, just to make sure that we're not creating situations with good intent, but down the line might have other implications, whether it's other outside programs or auxiliary services that would, that might want those same representations. And so I think creating an opportunity to be a part of already formed shared governance committees, it's already formed, and all you're doing is providing a space for the voice to be heard. As an organization or a committee, they could form and meet on their own, just as they have in this case, but when it comes to the official voice of the group, they come to an already formed district committee and provide input and have access to the transparency that we're looking for.
Thank you. I would just like to also say I've had, certainly had conversations with members from this group, positive conversations. I think my understanding is that they only want to be more informed, to be, to understand what's going on. And we have advisory committees with our, see, different advisory committees for different organizations within the college, for advisory from the community about different work road, what class, what work is needed in the community. I'm hoping it can be formed such as that, that they are a helpful tool to us, that we maybe would miss something that we wouldn't know that's going on in the community and that the transparency would go back and forth. That would be my opinion. How we get this all together, I think, is going to be the question. I'm going to leave that probably up to our administration to work with these members to form that, but from what I'm hearing, I think the board is very in favor of having this type of advisory committee. We did have two members from the community that didn't want to speak, their hands were raised, and if they're still interested, I would go back to that. And Sam and Lily Chen, okay? Sam Chong?
Hi, Madam President. Thank you. I have a question regarding the current RFP for the proposal. I was wondering if the steering committee and the advisory committee would possibly have any input regarding that?
I think when we get to that agenda item, it may be a question that we might ask, if we could maybe have a committee member on that, on the forming of that committee. I'd like to say that for then, if you don't mind, it's not too far down the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Lily, or is it Conrad?
It's Lily.
Hello, Lily.
Sorry about the two names. So Board trustee, as you've heard tonight from many in the BSC community, we have great concern about EXOS management, so thank you for considering a SMAC advisory group. And also thank Frank Elliott for the proposal to notify all members, including BSC members, because, to tell you the truth, we made our public comment tonight because we were totally unaware of the EXOS contract, its relationship with the college until recently. So I think if there's transparency, if the advisory group promotes transparency, it's going to be a good thing. And thank you, Trustee Mandelkeren and Schwartz, to be involved in the subcommittee for the RTF. I mean, I think that will shed a lot of light into, into the scope of the RTF. And if you can be involved in that process as kind of, in terms of oversight, that'll be great. Just from what I've heard tonight from Diana Thompson, Thomas, she has already made a lot of misrepresentations to the board. That's why we need this sort of SMAC advisory group. And I would also encourage someone from the aquatics club community to be involved in the advisory group. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is that it on the hand raising? Somebody will, oh, no. Oh, Tom Bauer. Not only is he got his hand raised, he's waving at me, seriously.
Yeah, I did raise it.
Vice Chancellor Bauer.
Thank you, President Schwartz. I just wanted to say a couple of things, and I'm going to actually let Diana talk as well after I do. So advisory committee, great idea, not an issue with it. It would need to be something representative of all members, not just swimmers, but happy to work with Frank and his group on putting that together. I do think it's a great idea. We actually have comment cards in the club. I think they're all paper. We don't even do it online, and we get thousands and thousands of them a year. And I do know that Diana and the team respond to each one of them, but having a constituent, a group of people, you know, working together to advise, I think that's fine. Just so you know, and to Trustee Goodman's point, we do have a district auxiliary services advisory committee as well as a college auxiliary services advisory committee. So the three, the ones at the college all work together and then come to the one for the district. And Diana actually comes to those, and we deal with the student concerns at those. So I'm not, I don't know, and we'll look into how that would work if we actually had this advisory group have some role in that, or it would just be a standalone, but we can certainly look at that. The other thing I wanted to just comment on before I turn it over to Diana is, President Schwartz, I heard a question about a member of the advisory group being on the RFP evaluation committee. That's not on the agenda later. I just didn't want you to think there's another agenda item. I just wanted to let you know, we have one seat open and available, and if the board directs me to, I can have that one remaining seat go to someone on the advisory group, if that is your will and direction.
Well, that was what I was referring to. So, you know, when we get to that item, I thought we could talk about it at that time.
I don't think it's an item on the agenda.
I thought it was. It's not?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, my bad.
Basically something that, you know, if...
Can we talk about it now?
Yeah. Kind of. If the board would like us to fill that seat with someone from the community, we will do that. Otherwise, I will fill it with another member of the district staff. I'm sorry for my throat. It's the, it's the smoke. I'm barely able to talk today, so.
Yeah, I apologize, too. I don't know what, you know, my notes get jumbled together here. So I knew that there was an opening, and I think that's what I was referring to. Trustee Holliver, go ahead.
Well, just really a question on what that process is. Can Vice Chancellor Bauer just explain what that, what is the committee and what is its role?
So I would actually defer that, if it's okay, to Yanelli Polito, if she's here. If she's not, I'll take a stab at it, but I would rather you have the general services. Yanelli, are you out there? There you are. She just unmute?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Great. So typically, the RFP committee is comprised of district employees, those that interact closely with the operation or the project at hand. I may have missed Tom's email in regards to recommending someone from the SMAC or the potential SMAC advisory group to participate on the RFP committee. If that is the decision that is made by the board, I would probably recommend that this member be an advisor to the process versus actually being a voting member.
Just a follow-up.
Sure.
And then, it's really, I'm trying to understand the committee's job. What is the committee doing?
So right now, the RFP has been released, and in preparation for that, we've identified the RFP committee members. And so once proposals are submitted, prior to that, I will have an introductory meeting to inform them of the RFP, given an opportunity for them to review the actual document, all the requirements, so that they're ready once proposals are submitted for review and evaluation. And so there's meetings before, and then the proposals are released along with an individual scoring sheet, and each member is supposed to score, review the proposals, score them individually, and then once that's completed, they have a deadline to submit their individual scores to me. I compile those onto a master spreadsheet, and then we follow up and we get together to review all the scores. And the scores are, they're not tied to an actual individual. I just, so that they remain anonymous. It's just, you know, they're identified by reviewer one, two, three, et cetera. And so then, the committee has an opportunity to discuss the proposals, you know, if there are any questions that they may have for clarification as we prepare for interviews with the proposers. We compile all that information, and then we finalize those, the master score sheet.
Is that the basis for ranking the winner and?
Correct, correct. Yes, so they're all evaluated based on the evaluation criteria that we've identified already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Okay.
So I think if I'm hearing Yanelli correctly, President Schwartz, her suggestion is that, because Yanelli is on the committee as well, but she's an advisor, she doesn't vote, she just makes sure we're toeing the line and doing what we're supposed to do legally. It sounds like what she's saying is that if we were going to have someone from this advisory group on there, that they would truly be in an advisory role and not a vote. If that is the will of the board, then I, we will fill the fifth seat with someone that the chancellor and I review and recommend.
Trustee Mandelkeren?
So I guess I'm unclear on the difference between a voting member and an advisory member, because Yanelli's description did not involve voting. It involved ranking, you know, responses on various categories. So does an advisory member get to submit a ranking?
No, they get to review the proposals and be part of the discussions and the meetings with the selection committee, and they can provide input and feedback to the rest of the group, to those that are actually voting and ranking the proposers.
Chancellor, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, well, and I, you know, I think it's important also to understand that, and I think the board knows this, but ultimately, all proposals will come to the board. It's just that this, the committee itself is doing some of that pre-screening, using expertise across the district and making some sort of recommendation to the board, but ultimately, it'll be a board decision in terms of, you know, the successful bidder on this particular contract. So I know you all know that, but I wanted to make sure that we are clear, particularly for members of the public.
Question, what's the timeframe? What's the timeframe for, like, the review? When will, when will that level of, you know, scoring, when does that happen?
You know, I...
Yes, I'm looking at our schedule right now. So proposals are due on the 22nd, and they basically have about five business days to evaluate, review, and get back to me on their individual scores. And then the following week on October 6th is when we have set the date for interviews.
Could I just, I'm really in doubt about the, I guess, legal and general advisability of having community members, you know, it's not a question of lack of regard for their opinion, but for them to serve on a committee of the sort without the board thinking it through and knowing legally what the legal ups and downs are, because I'm not just thinking about just this one. But I imagine this, maybe, Ms. Polito, you could let me know, is this sort of standard practice for many of our contracts that are, I guess, not competitively bid but are more evaluated on various merits, you know, pluses and minuses that are, I mean, is this standard practice to have this kind of review?
No, from my experience and being in procurement for public agency, it's not.
I mean, having a committee internal to the district review proposals, is that something we do elsewhere when we're considering bidders for, you know, getting work from us?
So it depends on the procurement, and so this is considered a best value process, and so it's an RFP. And so with that, we do have a selection committee. If it's a hard bid, meaning, you know, we need to award to the low bidder, we don't have such committee in place. So this is, it's typically the RFP process that we do for regular college operations is very similar to what we do for design build or at least leaseback RFP.
I guess I'd be hesitant about breaking new ground without knowing what this means for us legally, and also, you know, it then sets a new model. Do we do this with all of our, all of our contracts that fall within this broad category, you know, not, not hard bid, but ones that are value-based? I'm in doubt about doing it.
Trustee Mandelkeren, you had it.
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea, if we can figure out how to do it, to get input from the people who actually use the club on a regular and ongoing basis, probably have the best understanding of what works and doesn't work and what sounds attractive and doesn't sound attractive. But I guess the question is, in sort of a similar one, maybe taking our cafeteria and food services as an analogy to this, when we go out to bid for somebody to operate our food service, you know, as a vendor for that, specific dining being the current vendor for that, you know, do we have a committee that reviews those proposals? And on that committee, is there a representative of what's probably the biggest group of users of the cafeteria, is the students, you know, is there a student voice on that kind of committee? I would imagine, you know, one of the complications is when we have representatives on a committee that's involved with a, you know, potentially a large contract like this or food service or whatever, there's got to be some kind of, you know, conflict of interest checking and, you know, understanding, is there agreements that people sign that they don't have a financial tie to the outcome of this, that they don't have a vested interest in one vendor over the other, or their family member doesn't work for one of the bidders, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, I'm kind of wondering, you know, how we would make sure all of that is done so that we have a process that is indeed fair and impartial.
Any response to that question?
Yanelli, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Yeah, so for our, for our RFP selection committees, we do, as part of the, I'm drawing a blank on the word that I want to use, not like an introduction, but a welcome to, you know, the process. There is a conflict of interest check. They have to confirm that they have no known financial conflict of interest participating on the, on the committee. And then also, too, we're supposed to be maintaining confidentiality throughout the whole process, because, you know, we need to maintain the integrity of the process. And so, you know, we're in a blackout period right now as we've issued the RFP, so there's very limited communication to any potential proposer with anyone on the selection committee. As I'm the district representative, so if there's any questions, they're addressed to me. And so I think, I'm not sure if that answers your question, Trustee Mandelkeren?
Do we actually have students on the auxiliary service committee? Getting to Trustee Mandelkeren's question, the end users, the students, are they part of the process of selecting, or have they been part of the process of selecting our food vendor? I think that was one of your questions, Trustee Mandelkeren.
So particularly with the cafeteria, when we do an RFP, it's something that we discuss in day sack, we share questions that we plan to put into the RFP. But I think maybe the first time around, there were, there was a student on the committee. The second time around in my being here, I do not believe there was one. So I think it just depends on the circumstance and the timing of it. So, I think it just depends on the circumstance and the timing of it. But the first time, I know that there was.
Trustee Nures.
My question is, is I think, I think perhaps Vice Chancellor Bauer indicated that there are comment cards, there are suggestion cards that are available also, so you can get input from the community and from the members about how the program is operating, what are the things that people would like to see, and where do they end up? And where do they go? And how are they integrated into the improvement of the program or helping develop it one way or another?
That's a great question, trustee Nures. Diane, Alexis, can you bring her over? I'd like her to answer that specifically.
I'm here. Those comment cards are NCR duplicate forms. So, when they're completed, the top copy goes to, or both copies go into the general manager's mailbox. The general manager reviews them, assigns them to a department manager. The department manager calls back that individual within 48 to 72 hours, writes the resolution on those comment cards, and then returns them. Right now, you know, we obviously don't have any since March. But traditionally, those comment cards have centered around increasing group exercise classes that members wish to see, requests for various types of fitness equipment, adjustments to the showerheads when we, the district put in the water savers, locker room access at certain times, et cetera. So, those are traditionally the comments that we receive, and we address those.
So, I guess my follow-up is, is that do any of these comment cards come to the district as far as that goes? So, we also see what people are commenting on or what they feel is important. Is there any, is there any sharing of that information at the district level?
There has not been a formal request to do that. We do share anything that we see as repetitive with Tom Bauer and with facilities and with other agencies on campus when we need support with repairs. Those are also comments we take into consideration when such time comes that we have capital expenditure dollars to spend, and we use some of those to guide purchases for equipment. We have also implemented some of those suggestions into the feedback we receive when we present to the board when requested. But as far as a formal process, no, sir, not at this time.
Okay, well, I guess really where I was going with this is, we have the request for proposal. Was, was any of the public comment or the questions integrated into what we're asking people to make a proposal on? Maybe to move it in a different direction? We're talking about getting some community involvement in this at the, at the level of the committee that will be overseeing this. But I too, with trustee Holber, am reluctant to go beyond the scope of what we have been doing right now on all other similar type RFPs, just because we might be moving into an area that maybe isn't appropriate at this particular time. So, I mean, I'd like to make sure that we have feedback from the standpoint of people that have made suggestions or whatever to the group, but that we probably not go beyond what we've already done at this point, because the process has already begun. And maybe it's something that we're going to be looking at in the future if we want to change it. But it is precedent-setting, and perhaps that's something that we have to be concerned about.
And just to comment on that, and it's not my, my place to comment on whether or not that should or should not happen. I think the advisory committee that was suggested by Frank Elliott and some of his cohorts within our masters community is definitely something that we would support. I think we have to be mindful too, is when we develop that committee, that there are individuals that are representative of SMAC in a number of facets. We have to consider our senior members, our land users, our water users, group exercise people that wish we had classes every hour of the day that were open, members that have been members over five years, under five years, of course, our BSC swim parents, and of course, our students, because we are mandated to be a student-first facility and manage the San Mateo Athletic Club as a separate department, but integrated in the campus with a student-first focus. And we integrate SMAC around that, and you'll see in, inside SMAC, that it does state that we are an active classroom for our student population. So, I think student representation on that committee is also warranted.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? Trustee Mandelker.
Yes, so I respect the opinion of trustee Holber and trustee Nures. But, you know, the conversation this evening has been very illuminative, actually, on one point, which is hearing from the Bulldog Swim Club parents and their concerns about transparency and, and, you know, what has been communicated to them. And, you know, the other concerns that have been raised during the, the public comment earlier points out a hole in the feedback process, which is if these comments and comment cards and so forth are simply going to, you know, the EXOS management of the club and not going directly to the administration in Auxiliary Services or to the campus administration or to the board or wherever, that we never hear about these things. And it's essentially a blocking process that stops those complaints or those concerns or those issues from ever servicing beyond the, you know, the current manager, EXOS, or whoever the manager in the future might be of the club. So, I think that's something that we, we need to address, whether it's through, you know, representation on the RFP committee or not, or just representation in general going forward, that I think we need to make more of an effort to make sure that we are hearing the voice of the different users and different user communities of the club in an unfiltered way, getting through to the actual college administration in charge of SMAC, and so that we're not losing those comments and that feedback until it comes to something like tonight, where it's a lot of frustration in the room.
Trustee Nures.
I would agree with that. And that's why I think I brought up that initial issue about the cards and where do they go? And where, and do we have an opportunity to see them? And I appreciate the fact that you took it to the next level. I'd like to see us move in that direction. My concern was strictly dealing with the process of the RFP at this point and breaking with the patterns that we've already established and have in place. But, but I agree with your thoughts regarding the follow-up and the ability for us to also know what the users are thinking and to be able to make sure that those concerns are addressed properly.
Agreed. Vice Chancellor Bauer.
Yeah, so again, with the cards, I want to point out that there haven't been any cards or comment card or feedback cards available since we shut down on March 11th. And prior to that, yeah, I look, whenever, whenever I'm in there, I look at the cards that we have. And Diana properly said that any of them that deal with facilities issues or repetitive issues, they all come to me, because one way or another, there's something that the district has to act on. And I do want to make sure I say this. EXOS seems to get all of the blame for everything. And at the end of the day, what I want to make sure that people understand is that the decisions made with relation to this club are ultimately made by the district. I work with the chancellor and the, and the cabinet, and we are the ones that actually make the decisions. So, I do know that Diana Thomas has met with the Bulldog Swim Club on Zoom, and we've had, we've had activities all summer long. You know, one of the things that I struggle with is, you know, sometimes a lack of transparency or communication is just not hearing what you want to hear. And I get it. I, we have been bound by rules issued to us by the Health Department, and I heard all of the parents speak and from the different backgrounds and medical backgrounds. Every decision that we have made with relation to SMAC since March 11th has basically been in accordance with San Mateo County Health, our EOC director, and our chancellor and the cabinet. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. EXOS is not, is not operating in a vacuum. And if President Schwartz and the board, you would like me to take this and run with this with this advisory group? Happy to do that. Would love to put it together. And I do think to Diana's point, we would put it together with representation from all of the various groups in SMAC so that everybody has a voice.
Thank you. I would just give you my two cents on being around a long time. Sometimes we have to repeat things over and over and over again, even though we know we've already done that, because we have somebody else that didn't hear it quite the same way. And I know as elected officials, we're, we're all kind of used to that. So, let's do it again. Let's say it again. Let's try. What I'm hearing is actually this advisory committee, I feel, is very, very important for the club, the athletic center, and it definitely needs to be representative from all facets. And I would leave that up to people who know how to do such a thing and how big you want to make it, et cetera, et cetera. But I think I tend to agree as far as the RFP, not now, but maybe in the future. Because what we heard from the two groups, from the club that have been coming to us, well, the younger swimmers tonight and then the master swimmer team quite a bit earlier, is that they feel that they don't know what's going on and how can they learn more? So, other than I've told them all to get on the list, get the agendas and read them, you know ahead what's happening on the board. But I'm very sensitive to the fact that I think they, they really want to know what's happening, not so much that they can make a difference, but that they're not, that they just feel like they're part of the conversation. So, with that, Frank Elliott, you have a hand raised. For a long time, are you still there?
I'm still here, thank you. I think, I think Wayne was on, she had to leave. I appreciate all the comments, I understand where people are coming from. I think, you know, we've got two separate issues going. One is this advisory group we're trying to form, and it sounds there's, like, there's receptivity to that. We're very pleased about that. I think, it sounds to me like on this RFP thing, and that's not, that's not a critical issue for us, but I think you would be interested to know that Wayne has already signed up, and she's scheduled to attend that, the first mandatory meeting. And I have a guess that she probably knows about as much of that, the deadlines and the process for that, as almost anybody, because she's a vendor to the college as well. I, I don't, I don't see that there's any harm from, I don't know all the details. It doesn't seem like there's any harm, at least having her formally set up as an advisor, a non-voidifying advisor, because she's probably going to attend the meetings anyway. And I think as a user, she would give the staff and the board members important input from a member's perspective, not from an employee perspective on what's going on up there. So, I'd encourage you to try to maybe make that formal. And if it's advisory, I can't see the risks. And what I've heard staff say is that there's a precedent for that before. We've had advisory members that are not employees on those committees before. So, I'd ask you to consider that, and I'm very grateful for the direction this has taken, regardless of the side on that point.
Thank you. Trustee Mandelker.
Yeah, I just wanted to make two comments. So, one is, again, I just wanted to reiterate, I think the, the value and the strength of the advisory group will be amplified tremendously if it is a truly independent group and not a group that's hand-selected by, you know, the management or the administration of the, of the athletic club. I mean, I think it's similar to as we've heard about with the, the comment card issues, is the more of a filter that's placed in the information flow, the less valuable that information is. So, I personally prefer to receive the more direct and unfiltered information if we can. So, I would really, you know, encourage Mr. Elliott, and thank you for, you know, sticking with us this evening and with you and your colleagues. And again, I think we have people that can help advise you and help, can provide information on how to contact key people and, you know, how to reach out to the members. I'm sure that, you know, our staff will be happy to help with that. But in terms of actually, you know, putting this together and operating it, I think as independent as possible is a good idea. And, you know, and then we'll evaluate to make sure that all the different constituencies are represented and so forth. To the issue of the RFP and the advisory role, I'll respect the, you know, obviously, I think we have three out of five trustees have stated their position here, which is a majority of the board. So, I will respect my colleague's position on that. But I will just note that there, obviously, we're going to review the responses, the RFP, in open session. This will come back to us. The responses will be made available as part of the board packet. I would encourage members, especially Mr. Elliott, as you pointed out, that, you know, some of your colleagues have expertise in this area, being vendors themselves or being involved in similar operations, that your, your input during our discussions and our review of this are certainly very welcome. Whether someone is a formal member of the RFP review team or an advisory member or not, input from anyone in any group is always welcome as we review these RFP responses. And as we as a board, trying to do our job to come to the best decision possible for the district and for our community, I would certainly hope you will continue to be engaged in the review process and provide us your input in that channel and that venue as well.
Thank you. One more hand raised. John Hemantel.
Thank you, President Schwartz. I, I just want to continue to raise a comment that I've raised consistently as a member of the public to ask, what is the academic purpose of, of these facilities? And how do we maximize their capacity for workforce training and academic advancement for our student population? As well as keeping them maximally open for the community so that the community can utilize these facilities that they've spent a couple hundred million dollars building? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments before we move on? I think direction has been given, but I don't know who I'm giving it to. Would that be Vice Chancellor Bauer?
Yeah, I think I hear you.
So, very good. I'm personally very pleased that there's going to be this committee. And I think we've opened up a lot of transparency that we didn't know we needed to. Okay? Ready to move forward? See no objections? Here we go. Twenty-eight-one A, approval of personnel items, changes in assignment, compensation placement, leave, staff allocations, and classification. Before you say anything, staff has asked that the item on the report pertaining to Chris, oh boy, Jorness be removed, and David Fune has one more clarifying edit. So, before I call for the motion, maybe we should know what that is.
Sure. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. So, on section I'm going through right now, so section F, changes in staff allocation. The first item under Kenyatta College, recommended change in staff allocation to add one temporary full-time dean of kinesiology, athletics, and dance position. The effective date, it's a typo, it has August 20th, 2019. It should be August 20th, 2020. So, if we could make that correction, that would be great.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Fune.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now I'll call for the motion in a second. Thank you. Prove as amended. Do you have a second? Trustee Nures, thank you. Any public comments? Any comments or questions from the board members? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye. The motion has carried by unanimous vote. Consent agenda, twenty-eight-one C A, acceptance of the Truth Initiative Tobacco Vape Free College Program Grant at Skollin College. Twenty-eight-two C A, approval to renew the Half Moon Bay property site use permit with Louis, oh boy, I O, I O, I O copy. Twenty-eight-three C A, declaration of surplus property. And twenty-eight-four C A, disposition of district records. Do any board members need to request to have any of them removed? And I will call for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, trustee Goodman, which one?
One second. The Half Moon Bay site.
Now, you'd like that on its own, okay? That's be twenty-eight-two C A.
Right.
This might be new for you, so we'll tell you. We'll take that one on its own. Any other comments or questions?
Move approval of the remaining consent agenda.
Thank you, in a second. Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. You have a question about our Half Moon Bay property?
Yeah, so you said there's some history. So, I wanted to know exactly what's the site being used for? How has it changed over time? It seems like a very longstanding partnership there.
I don't know who wants to give the history. Chancellor Claire?
Well, I'll start, but I'll probably have to defer to Mitch Bailey. You know, the site, I believe, was actually purchased to be a potential fourth college. And this is before all the, the laws were put in place. And we literally cannot develop it. We cannot run water to it. And so, it's really, it's farmland essentially. And, and I'm going to have Mitch jump in here in terms of the use, but it really has, doesn't have use necessarily to the district at this point. Mitch, do you want to, you want to add anything?
I would say that it's my understanding that this property has been used for the same purpose, probably since. same purpose, probably since, I think actually since I've been alive, which is farming. There's no other things you can do on it. As the chancellor mentioned, there are no public utilities that are servicing that area and can't from the Half Moon Bay area. So the individual who has had the lease on that land has been using it for, and just general small farming purposes.
Yeah, I can just add, maybe Richard wants to say something too. Not, we've tried to trade and nobody's ever been interested. We've tried to trade with Post, we've tried to trade with the county, and over the years, and we never can develop, get any interest. So it just, this is, seems to be the best we can do.
Yeah, and I think that's what my question is, over time, you know, like, how do we know it's the best we can do? Do we, have we seen, like, any books or any, I don't know what farming you can do without irrigation or water, but, you know, I'm assuming he's found a way to get water there somehow, if he's doing farming. But, you know, is there, but the amount that we're charging has gone up, and so was that commiserate just with time? You know, what, what's transpired over that period of time? Because the cost has obviously went up. Is it just something that inflations, or do we have that information?
I'm going to have to defer to Yanelli Paludo on that particular issue, if she is still available.
Oh, Yanelli. She may have. Hi. Yes, so this property is protected by the coast side, I believe, I don't know the exact name, but it's protected property and it can't be developed, so that's the reason why we haven't been able to do it. And it's not an interest to any other party. Mr. I U Copy is basically in paying the lease amount per acre for wet farming, and the land itself does have a pond, so that collects the rainwater. And then other than that, he does take care of the property for us, and he's responsible for the perimeter fencing. So it's kind of like, you know, give and take, but the increase over time, yes, it's due to inflation, as it's tied with the CPI for the Bay Area.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're very welcome. If he increases five percent or the Bay Area CPI, whichever is greater each year.
Thank you. Okay, we have a hand raised, Alex Kramer, you wanted to comment on this? Yeah, can it be unmuted? There we go.
Hi, very sorry, I actually did not intend to raise my hand, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, so questions, questions answered, Trustee Goodman and Trustee Menelkar, you're offering to buy the property?
Yes, I am. So there, things do change on the coast side, and so recently there was approval of a variance for a large below-market rate, excuse me, below-market rate housing development on the coast side. And so I think it is worthwhile from time to time to revisit this issue and not just assume that there's no interest and no possibility, because I think if there was a possibility of doing a swap with a group, given especially the vital need of housing both in the county at large, where this might be helpful, and for our students in our communities in particular, where Half Moon Bay probably isn't a very useful location for student housing for our current campuses, but if there was a possibility of doing some kind of swap with an interested party that might make more housing available, I think that would behoove us to look at those options. So not suggesting that we get into a lengthy discussion right now about this, but at some point in the future, it may be worth our while to just check in and see if there has been any change on the coast side and with that particular property and the level of interest in it.
I totally agree. Because I don't know when's the last time anybody, it's been a lot of years before, but I personally haven't any update on it. Okay, are we, any other comments or questions on this item? Twenty-eight-two C A, do you have a motion in a second?
No moves.
Thank you, just in case, have a second, somebody, thank you. I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Other recommendations, down to twenty-eight-one-on-one B, ratification of sole source service agreement between San Mateo County Community College District and Bay Area Biotechnology Education Community, or B A B E C, B E C, to provide project and logistic management expertise to further employ and expand the BioScope project. Motion in a second, please.
Move approval.
Thank you, second, thank you. Are there any public comments? Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Twenty-eight-one-on-two B, ratification of sole source service agreement between San Mateo County Community College District and Peralta Community College District to utilize the service of Laney College to provide operational and technical, sorry, assistance to expand the BioScope project. Motion, thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comments? Any questions or concerns from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes. Twenty-eight-one-on-three B, approval of sole source agreement with state chancellor office identified key talent of reentry Connect Technologies. Any motion? Thank you. Who is that? Any public comments? Any comments from the board? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes. Twenty-eight-one-on-four B, ratification of sole, did I just do that? Sole source agreement for building management system maintenance services with Schneider Electric Building Americas. Need a motion in a second, please?
No moves, second.
Thank you. Jose Nunes is here to answer any questions, are there any public comments? Any board questions or concerns? Trustee Menelkar?
Yes, I do have a question regarding the size of this contract and that it's, you know, every year it goes out on a sole source basis. Are there any other vendors that provide this type of service that we should be looking at as competitive bidders? I know that we, I believe, purchased this equipment originally from Schneider Electric, but I'm just wondering if there are any other vendors that perform the annual service and maintenance that we should be trying to get a, you know, competitive price bid from?
So it is in our interest to continue with Schneider, because all of our equipment is Schneider-based, the software is Schneider-based, it's basically proprietary-type software. We have over nine thousand devices that are associated with this, and going with another vendor such as, you know, Johnson Controls or some other will bring in an outside entity that may or may not be familiar with the devices that we work with.
Any other questions or comments? Are you okay with that, Trustee Menelkar? Kind of, okay. Call for the vote.
I understand the answer, not sure I'm particularly happy with the answer, but it is like, I assume this was something we considered when we made the initial purchase, that we were going to be locked into a sole source of maintenance and support for it.
That was not the intent, we were looking for, I mean, we've been with Schneider now for about probably ten, fifteen years, we were hoping for an open source, you know, type software, but over the development of time and new technologies and software, we sort of, you know, kind of got roped in with Schneider, if you will, and I'm just putting it bluntly out there. The service and our relationship with Schneider has been extreme, they're extremely responsive and supportive of all district initiative, and again, it's in our best interest because all our devices, over nine thousand of them, are all, you know, Schneider devices.
Is there, is there some point in the future where we will look at replacing all those devices because they're obsolete or aged out or something like that, and we would look at a more open source solution rather than a closed proprietary solution?
So as device, it depends on a particular project, and yes, we could look into that, into future projects, you know, but it's like having two or three or four separate vendors working on your equipment, and you're really better off with having one vendor that knows, particularly the technicians and the sales representatives, and those that really know the meat and bones of your particular campus.
Better understanding, okay? Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I will call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Twenty-eight-one-on-five B, amendment to the twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-six five-year capital construction plan. A motion in a second, please?
No moves.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Chancellor Jose Nunes is here to answer questions. Any public comments? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from board members? Call for the vote, all in favor, aye. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Before we do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How is this different than what we just did at our last meeting?
So I can respond to that, in the five capital YCP project, two FPP projects there, Sky, I want to say, wait a minute, Kenyatta III and CSM IX were approved by the state for funding, and, you know, we went into it assuming that we would have the matching funding. In this case here, I think if I recall correctly, Yanelli correctly from wrong, it was about thirty-six million dollars. You know, our understanding was that we would come up with the match after further looking into the issue. You know, we've had conversations with the state chancellor's office up in Sacramento, and, you know, we can't come up with the thirty-six million dollars. I had conversations with Chancellor Claire, Mitch Bailey, Bernada, Peter Fitzsimmons on the financial side, you know, do we have any hidden monies that we can come up with the match? And apparently it didn't happen. You know, as such, you know, I have a responsibility report to the state that, you know, San Mateo Community College District, the first time in my twenty years, you know, have to revert and give back, you know, the thirty-six million dollars because we don't have the thirty-six million dollars match on this. Hence why, as you can see, I had to do an amendment. Should I have done this a little earlier in May and thought it through? Probably yes. But here I am at a point right now that, you know, I have to face up to the state and let them know that we do not have the thirty-six million dollar match money. And I went ahead and officially, not officially, verbally done that via email communications, and this action right here is the formal notification to them that, you know, we're basically withdrawing our final project proposals, FPPs, for those two projects. And as mentioned in the proposal there, we went again and resubmitted the projects and have to recompete, so there's no guarantee that we will be getting, or be selected or approved for the two future projects plus the fifth one, which was a little below the line, it's just the Sky Building Five Library and Learning Research Center. If in fact, for the twenty-two-twenty-three cycle, as written in the report there, those projects are approved, then I have to reevaluate it all over again, because that's a fifty million dollar match that will be required for that. I know it's complicated, but hopefully I've somewhat explained it to you.
Thank you.
Mike?
And I'm sorry, just to add to that, Trustee Holliver, and I had conversations with Bernada Slater, and we brought in Kathy Blackwood. Given our uncertain future, terms of our fiscal future, I was just not comfortable with floating that kind of money, although it's really hard to give the money back to the state, but I feel that this is the best course of action to take at this point.
And if I may add something, if you, you may not recall, but when all those projects were submitted to the state, at that time, no match was required. So the match just showed up pretty much last year, where the districts are now supposed, are required to provide a match for those state funding under the Prop 51. And that's quite a substantial amount for each district to come up with the matching fund for those projects for us. So to make sure that we have set aside dollars, it's quite a challenge, especially given that what we're going through with the COVID-19, as well as potential future challenges with this state dollars sort of dwindling.
Trustee Menelkar?
Yeah, I just think it's regrettable, whatever, we have to give money back, because this is a way that, you know, we could leverage dollar for dollar, our local community's contribution to our facilities, and, you know, essentially the ability to, you know, buy buildings or buy renovations to buildings at fifty cents on the dollar, essentially. It's a half-price sale, and we can't shop, and that upsets me and, you know, makes me sad. I do understand, however, especially given these uncertain financial times, that this is not the time to be taking a lot of risk and, you know, borrowing to the max on our credit card, as it were, when we're going to an uncertain income time coming up in the next couple of years. But I would hope going forward, now that we understand the matching requirements, that we plan, you know, with a little bit more foresight, so that we do set aside money in anticipation of the matching dollars needed, so that should we wind up getting a competitive, you know, grant like this again, that we fought so hard for, for over so many years to finally get this, that we will be able to take advantage of it, because I think it's a, you know, great way of leveraging the generosity of our local community and our local taxpayers who support us so generously in terms of our building programs, to get the state matching money in, to make these projects happen. So I hope we will have the foresight and the ability to plan, using all of the, you know, tricks that we have up our sleeve, whether it's revenue anticipation notes or certificates of participation, or, you know, various other ideas and ways that we have to try and come up with money in the short term that we pay for, or with the long term to do various building projects with, I'm sure there's lots of clever ways, you know, short of another general obligation bond, that we can try and come up with some money. Again, maybe not this year, given the financial uncertainty, but hopefully in the future we'll have a better strategy for how to take advantage of these opportunities.
Yeah, and Trustee Menelkar, I appreciate those words, because, let me just remind everybody, you know, over the last fifteen years, we've put a billion dollars' worth of work into our three campuses. Out of that billion dollars, a hundred and seventy-five, almost a hundred and eighty million dollars was state-funded projects over CIP, Capital Improvement Program, one, two, and three. So yeah, you know, we're at a point right now that Measure H is exhausted, and we don't have these matching funds, but hopefully in the future, we can, you know, develop strategies to address, you know, everything that you just articulated, Trustee Menelkar.
Yeah. Trustee Norris?
I'm sure that we're not the only district in the state though that finds themselves in the same situation at this point, because all have to do this. And so it's just a sign of the times, and I'm sure when the opportunity arises again for us to be able to make applications, we will be competitive as we've been in the past. So it's consistent with what I think others are doing as well.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, Trustee Norris, I sit on the ACBO Facilities Task Force, we meet on a quarterly basis up in Sacramento, and there are several districts up and down the state that were in that situation. With the failure of several local bonds, you had several districts just like us that had approved projects, and we're hoping on those local bonds to come up with a matching fund, and unfortunately couldn't do it. It is a sad state of affairs, but that's where we are up and down the state, sir.
Okay, any other depressing questions?
Very depressing.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is, it's very sad.
Very frustrating.
It's very frustrating, absolutely. So exciting to get them, and then, yeah, I think in my career, it's the first time we've ever had to turn it back.
It is the first time.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Twenty-eight-one-on-six B, approval of student accidental injury insurance program for twenty, 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 twenty-one. Motion in a second, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, are there any public comments? Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Information reports, twenty-eight-one C, a report on the use of public agency contracts for the purchase of materials, equipment, supplies and services. This is purely an informational report, there is no staff presentation. Yarani Polito, interim director of general services, is available to the board if there's any questions. So any questions for Yarani? Just butchered her name. I guess it was very well done and accepted, thank you very much. Twenty-eight-two C, district-wide American Twenty-eight, two C, district-wide American with Disabilities Act Plan Update. Jose Nunes, vice chancellor, facility planning and maintenance and operations. And Chris Strugarfich, director of capital projects, will provide this report.
Okay, I'm not, my name is on the fancy report, but I have to admit Chris Strugarfich is the one who's going to make you all smart on this. Chris, you there?
Hi, this is Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening trustees. So I did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank God.
So the purpose of the report is primarily to inform the trustees as well as the public. That we've undertaken a, a project to update our ADA plan for the past year. And the, we wanted to let you know that the plan has, is broken down into two parts or two components. There's, um, self-assessment evaluation, that's one part. And then the second part is the, um, transition plan itself. And the distinction between those two plans is the self-assessment. Is. An evaluation of how we provide our services to the public, to our students, to our faculty, to our employees. Once they're on our campuses and how do we provide those services? And how do we provide reasonable accommodation during meetings? How does our website provide accommodation? You know, how do, how do we provide accommodation to students going through financial aid? And, and then the second component is the transition plan. And that, that involves the, um, the built environment of our campuses. And so if you think about, um, the transition plan is. How do we provide access to the public, to our students, to our employees when they come to our campuses or to our district? And so it's looking at any physical barriers that could prevent somebody from having access to our buildings. And having access to get those services. So, so those are the two components of the plan. And the reason we're, um, informing the board this evening about the updated plan is. We're completing the draft of the, um, updated plan early next month. And part of the, uh, process is to have a, um, public comment period. So we wanted to let you know that we will be advertising, um, to all of the campus constituents as well as on our websites. The availability of being able to review the plan as well as comment on the plan. And to help facilitate participation in that, we're planning to have two webinars in early October. One in the morning and one in the afternoon, the date hasn't been determined yet. And the purpose is to help people understand how the plan is laid out. And encourage folks to look at the plan and if they do have comments, um, to, to submit their comments, submit their questions. At the end of that process, um, in later October, we'll take all the comments and they'll become part of the final ADA plan update. And then later this year, we intend to bring the plan back to the trustees for approval and adoption. So, um, that's, that's the gist of what this information report is about. And really, we wanted to let the trustees know that we're getting ready to release the plan for public consumption. And also to invite the trustees as well to participate in the review and comment period of the plan. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good summary, Chris.
Yeah, very good, thank you, Chris. Questions from board members? Trustee Mendel Kern, I see you.
Thank you. Yeah, so, uh, I'll just start as saying, I, I'm a huge believer in the Americans with Disabilities Act for some, you know, personal experiences in my, in my life. And I know the, the spirit and the intent of our administration is to be not only fully compliant with the letter of the law, but with the spirit of the law, which I, I fully applaud and support. But I do know over the past few years, we had a couple of instances where we have, uh, been on the, uh, losing end of lawsuits over technical violations of the American with Disabilities Act. And that have been fairly costly to the district, honestly. Um, and I'm hoping that part of this exercise, and please educate me or illuminate me or correct me if I'm incorrect in any of this. But I hope that part of this exercise is to actually, uh, you know, check and audit where we are in terms of our campus facilities. And make sure that we don't have any technical violations or that we are as, you know, in front of the, uh, you know, trying to get these things fixed. And as, as quickly as possible and be in full compliance with the, you know, letter and spirit of the law as best we can. Uh, so I'm, I'm hoping that that is part of this activity and as, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, Chris, can you talk to, uh, the, the physical assessment that was done in, uh, terms of trustee Mendel Kern's question?
Sure, so, um. The physical, the physical surveys that were done on all our campuses and, and we surveyed all the buildings. We surveyed all our sidewalks, all our parking lots, um, and.
Restrooms.
Restrooms, that's, yes, and we found approximately fifty-nine hundred barriers that, um, would require mitigation. And it sounds like a lot, but when you think about the amount of area that we're surveying, um, it's over a hundred buildings. A hundred and twenty-some miles of sidewalks. A lot of the barriers that we're finding are very simple to meet, um, to mitigate. Some of them are, uh, common. Common things like common maintenance items where door closers, um, they have to be checked twice a year. And so sometimes the door closers will slow down or speed up and they, they don't, they don't slow, they don't close the door. In the amount of time that ADA requires them to be closed, they may, they may close or latch too fast. And depending on when we did the survey within that maintenance cycle, um, is probably why we found some of those types of barriers. The buildings, the newer buildings have been designed, um, they've been permitted, they were constructed according to the ADA plan. Or the ADA codes that were enforced at that time. But we're finding in some of the newer buildings, we do have some barriers that need to be mitigated. In some cases, it's because when the plans were reviewed by the Division Estate Architect, they may have not caught, uh, some things that would be out of compliance. We have a, an inspector of record that's certified by the Division Estate Architect and they certify that the buildings have been constructed according to. According to the approved plans and drawings. And sometimes the inspectors miss things. So it's possible that some of the newer buildings like CSM Building Ten could have had some barriers that were over, overlooked when they were constructed. But we're finding them now. So part of the transition plan is to take all the, all the information we found, all the barriers. And we're putting them into a work plan. They're being prioritized based on where the, the, the greatest need is or. Need being what, what is creating, you know, the most adverse barrier for, um, people to access our campuses. And then, once they're prioritized, then the Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations will come up with an execution plan. So the idea that is part of this plan, um, how do we mitigate the barriers once we've identified them? And so, um, that, that is part of the document that you'll see when it's posted next month is. The identification of the barriers and the start of the prioritization and the mitigation plan.
And so, and let me just add, just preliminary, looking at this thing here, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. We've put together a plan that, that'll try to address this over a ten-year period because it's approximately a thirty million dollar issue. So we're looking at possibly three million dollars a year over a ten-year period to address some of these issues. Now, a lot of this stuff can be done in-house with Michelle Radowski and her facilities team. But. It's something that we need to take into consideration.
And also, I'd like to point out that ADA, when, when you've identified the barriers, they don't say you have to fix them all right now. What we are required to do is to prioritize them and come up with a plan. And then show evidence that we've been working towards mitigating those barriers. Yeah, so, um. Some of the, some of the barriers that we found in, say, Kenyatta Building Thirteen. There's approximately two hundred and fifty barriers that were found in that building. That building is scheduled for a full modernization, uh, starting next year. The plans have been completed, they've been submitted to the Division of the State Architects Office. And when they're approved and permitted, we'll go out for bids, uh, early next year and then construction will start, uh, late next spring. And as we go through and modernize that building, all those barriers that have been identified in the ADA transition plan will be mitigated. So some of these, some of these barriers are being mitigated under the current bond measure program, measure H. As part of the capital improvement program, so. The same thing is occurring for Sky Building Two. There's approximately three hundred barriers that need to be mitigated in that building. And again, that project was, um, is submitted to the Division Estate Architects Office. It's a modernization project, it's a capital outlay project that we've received funding for. And that project will begin construction, uh, late next spring or early summer, about the same timeline as Kenyatta Building Thirteen. Those barriers will be mitigated as part of that. And that's what ADA allows us to do is to, um, address those issues when we do a modernization of, of a facility, so.
And, and current project, if I can just add to some of the projects that Chris mentions, uh, Kenyatta College Building Twenty-two is going through a modernization project right now. For swing space and of course, uh, final end users that will be in there permanently, non-swing. So some of the issues associated with that project will be done. CSM Nineteen, we're in the program stages of that now. And so all of the areas associated with CSM Building Nineteen Engineering are going to be addressed there. Sky Nineteen, Pacific Heights, we're going into a swing space process there. So hopefully, uh, uh, the majority of, uh, items identified in that particular project will, will be addressed as well. So we're really, you know, uh, touching these, uh, uh, items that Chris talked about in, in, in a project by project, uh, basis, but there's a lot to be done.
Well, thank you, if I may, trustee President Schwartz, thank you for the very detailed and thorough answer. And, and again, I appreciate the commitment to actually, you know, solving the functional issue of how do we provide access for our students and our community to our buildings? In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. But as we know, there is an element of this which is actually about, you know, uh, risk management and, and, uh, you know, lawsuit, uh, prevention and avoidance as well. Which is unfortunately, as we've learned the hard way, when a toilet paper roll is installed a quarter inch off from the plan. Or doorway is three eighths of an inch too narrow from what the plan said it was supposed to be. We wind up paying tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars out in legal settlements. So while the fifty-nine hundred issues may not sound, you know, like a big number or significant issues based on your opinion. You know, as a board member, I look at each one of those fifty-nine hundred instances as a potential ten thousand or a hundred thousand dollar legal settlement that we're potentially looking for. So that's why I think it's important that we get ahead of the curve on these issues and try and address them. And, and make sure that we are very thorough in our checking and not just relying on, well, you know, the state architect approved it. Or the inspector of record signed off that we must be good, but we really have to double check these things as we've unfortunately learned the hard way. That we, we can't take these as a given, we have to make sure that we are in very detailed and specific compliance. Because we know there are people out there with tape measures who will be checking us down to the, you know, eighth of an inch or whatever it is, uh, to, to see if we are in compliance or not.
Well, and I think that's what, you know, the updated plan is going to provide. It's, it's taking all of these policies and procedures operationally, that's what the self-assessment does. And then the transition plan, all the physical barriers. And it's collating it all into one master document. And what it does according to title, and it's being done in accordance with Title Two and the Department of Justice and the Civil Rights Act. If we do get a lawsuit, it does put us in a better position because now we have evidence that we can take into. Either an arbitration or a litigation and show evidence that we have a plan and that we're working on our plan. And yes, there are some barriers, but we've identified them and we're working towards, um, mitigating those barriers. And so I think that the updated plan is going to put us in a better position, a more defensible position against those types of, um, lawsuits. The other thing is, it's the right thing to do. You know, putting together a comprehensive ADA plan for the institution. That addresses the physical barriers as well as how we provide service to all of our constituents. It's the right thing to do because, um, you know, we're defending the civil rights of access for the general public to come to this institution as a public institution. So, um. I think, I think we're.
Would not agree with you more on the importance of, of being in full compliance and, and keeping with our mission to serve all of our students.
Thank you for that summary, Chris. Totally understand where you're coming from, trustee Mendel Kern, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris and Jose. Any other questions or clarifications from board members? Very good, okay, we'll carry on. Down to twenty-eight, four C, an update on the fall. Twenty-twenty remote operations as a result of COVID nineteen. Chancellor Claire is going to give us a report.
Thank you, President Schwartz, and actually it'll primarily be Ben Zara Minkin and Karen McGee, um, reporting. But we thought with the first day, literally, of the fall semester, it would be important for the board to hear. The work that has gone into preparing for the fall semester, not only from keeping the campus safe through our EOC structure. But also in terms of working with the faculty and the classified staff, uh, in this online mode. You know, I, I was just thinking as we were going through this last, um, report, how we were facing the, uh, the PG&E power, uh, power shutdowns last year. And that was the first time we really stood up our EOC. And, um, we, we talked at the time, we, we know how to do power outages, it's, it's not rocket science, we've been doing them for years and we can manage that. But it was a really a great, um, opportunity for us to, to really take an EOC beyond a tabletop exercise and actually execute. And who knew, you know, just a few months later that we'd actually have to stand up the EOC, uh, as a result of the COVID nineteen response. So, um, I know I mentioned this on opening day and I want, if there's one thing I want you to really take from this. There's a lot I want you to take from it, but since the shelter in place, since we stood up the EOC. There's, there's a group in the EOC, and not all of them are on the org chart that you're going to see, but. We've collectively put in sixteen thousand hours or almost seventeen thousand hours in terms of planning and responding to this pandemic. And as I mentioned on open day, that's on top of everybody's other job and it's taken a lot of attention. We've learned a lot and I hope in my lifetime I never see another pandemic again. You know, they don't teach you this in administrator school, how to respond to a pandemic. And, but I feel I'm very proud of, of the team and the work that we've done. So with that, I believe I'm going to, um, turn it over to our emergency services coordinator, Ben Zara. Ben Zara, the presentation is yours.
Thank you, thank everybody for having me. Um, I appreciate the time and being in front of you again, I'm going to share my screen with you because I have a quick, um, PowerPoint, everybody. Let me see here. I hope everybody can see, uh, the screen here as I talk. So, uh, like, um, Chancellor Claire was stating, um, our emergency operations center has been incredibly collaborative. The structure that we have created has been a command and control structure, which means it's a typical hierarchical structure. However, it has really been a shared, a blending of shared governance with, uh, the command and control structure. This is our EOC organization and I'll go into further detail as we progress through the slides. So this is the policy group and liaison, it's composed of the, uh, three presidents and our chancellor and our liaison, which is, um, Vice Chancellor Bailey. And so the role of the policy groups provide guidance on the priorities and objectives that are based on the situation needs and on the emergency operations. They oversee the resources and the coordination to support the incident commander and from the operations center. And they give us advice on the guidance concerning legal matters, claims and actions. And it also incorporates, uh, Vice Chancellor Bailey, who is our liaison officer. And he's the point of contact for the people within the EOC and the conduit to the policy group. And he will supplement the EOC with any other types of personnel needed as we, um, manage the incident. Our public information officer is Richard Rojo. The responsibilities of, uh, of Rich is to maintain a current knowledge of the emergency plan and the staff roles. And it's very important that we have a single point of information to the media and all stakeholders. That way, we have clear information, uh, to the incident commander and policy. And that they present the organization on matters of importance to the community. Um, I know I'm going to, uh, use the word amazing constantly in this presentation and I wish I had more adjectives for, uh, everybody. I lack the eloquence of my conviction. Everybody, I lack the eloquence of my convictions, but everybody has been incredibly amazing. Specifically talking about Dr. Mitchell. She has, when I go to the next slide, everybody here and all board members will see. That she really has been managing all of the operations within the district. Including all of the branches that work underneath her and that's the public safety branch, the information technology branch. Our access groups, our continuity of student services, our continuity of instruction, our continuity of business, our health branch. And our facilities and decon branch. And if you look at this slide, you can see that all, this is really a comprehensive list of everything it takes to keep the district running.
Is, is it just me or is Ben Zara's audio cutting in and out?
Can you guys hear me?
It was cutting in and out.
Yeah, his audio is coming in and out, Ben.
Sorry about that. Can everybody hear me now or am I going to need to call in?
Right now, you're fine.
Much better.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll stay closer.
You gotta get closer to the mic, yeah.
Stay closer.
Thank you, everybody. So again, what, what Carrie has done is really the district. Her work has led to the continuity of the district and specifically. On the instructional side, on the business side and bringing all of these branches together in a collaborative fashion to make sure that the district is safe. Our continuity of instruction has been led by Dr. McBean. He has done an amazing job as well. I'm going to use that word a lot. He has really blended the shared governance role with the command and control structure of the emergency operations center. And as you can see from these icons, he manages the instructional delivery, the communication. Scheduling and is the conduit between the emergency operations center and the instructional side of the house.
You're cutting in and out again.
Sorry, I'm, I'm going to get closer. I apologize. I'm going to turn the next slide over to Aaron. Yeah.
Thanks, Ben Zara. First, I really want to reiterate, reiterate what Ben Zara just said about Dr. Mitchell's leadership during this entire. Emergency situation. Without her, I don't think we'd be able to do what we're doing right now, which is. Continue to provide a high level of continuity in our instruction as well as manage all of the different operations. That are going on on our campuses to distribute technology, distribute books, distribute kits. And so it really is a credit to her, her leadership in this and I want to make sure that we recognize that. When we went into an emergency mode in the spring, continuity instruction meant finishing out that spring semester. We can give a future update to the board on the the impact, but I will say we've, we've done an analysis on, for example, the number of withdrawals that we issued. And they were not significantly higher than even the previous spring semester. Well, we did EW's excuse withdrawals as opposed to regular withdrawals. But they were within a percent of the previous spring semester. Same with our success rates overall, both in our face to face and online classes. Those that were scheduled online versus those that were shifted. Which really speaks to our response as a district, the colleges, the faculty, the staff coming together to make sure that students could finish their spring semesters. As we moved to the summer, it was all about allowing students to finish out those courses that were unable to finish in the, in the, in the spring. And we successfully did that as well as ran a summer semester that saw a significant increase in enrollment, even though it was online. And then we turned to the fall and so we started the fall semester today. 95% of our enrollments are online, remote instruction. And that was really made possible by what you see on the the screen before you. So we had over 620 faculty members go through our. 25 hour quality online teaching and learning module during the summer, starting at the end of May, all the way through literally last week. We also had 60 dual enrollment faculty, kudos to Andrew Visner for. Not only leading the dual enrollment implementation from Skyline, but also making sure that our dual enrollment faculty were included in these trainings. And it really speaks to our investment of the district in this infrastructure. We didn't know that we were preparing to handle a pandemic shift to online. But the fact that we had folks in place to be able to then deliver this training really speaks to the planning that the colleges had undertaken over the past several years. It put us in a position that we could handle this and I think the impact that I talked about demonstrates that we did as good a job as we could have hoped. You can always do better, though. Then next slide really quick, please. So I really do want to recognize the folks who delivered all of that training in order to prepare for this fall semester launch. Dr. Roland Mo, he's the dean of ASLT at Skyline College. He's barely been with us a year. Like so many folks, he stepped up into a district wide role and really took on the leadership to make sure that not just Skyline, but all three colleges could deliver this training. We had the facilitators you see on that list. Dr. Bianca Raden Quince, who was our first and only faculty instructional designer up until you approved the hire. On the board agenda today to bring on additional faculty instructional designers to the district. Faculty distance education coordinators, Chris Collins from Skyline. And if you want someone to show you what online learning can look like beyond what you ever imagined, Dr. Nick Dembalo from Kenyatta will blow your mind as a chemistry instructor. He, he is on another level when it comes to online instruction. And these are the folks in our district training their peers in order to be able to deliver that continuity of instruction. And then you see we had teaching assistants and then a whole slate, 45 of course reviewers. All faculty making sure that the courses develop during this training. We're meeting the standards that are required by Title V in order to have quality online instruction, meeting accreditation requirements. And it took all of, this is just, you know, one small part, but this is a huge lift. 680 faculty during the summer months, really preparing to deliver this fall semester, 95% online. For the remainder that's being delivered in person, we've talked about it before. We're focused on our essential infrastructure sectors of healthcare and emergency services. Some critical STEM labs, but very, very few in those key transfer areas that lead to. Critical infrastructure sectors such as healthcare, biotechnology. And those are the in-person classes and as well as automotive tech, technology, which is part of that critical infrastructure sector of transportation that's identified. It's the work and kudos also to to Ben Zara and his leadership. In order to allow us to deliver that instruction in a safe manner. And in compliance with all of the regulations of our county and our state. So I want to recognize him as well in leading this work. Thanks so much, Ben Zara.
Thank you very much, Dr. McBean. And as you, as the board can see, we have, that's our breakdown of where our students are going to be located for fall. You can, I hope everybody can hear me. I'm going to get in really close. I apologize for. Getting really close here, but I want to make sure that I'm clear. What's important about the occupancy load as in the emergency operations center is there's a lot of work that has to go into making sure that each student. Goes through an access point, that that access point is staffed. And it aligns up with occupancy in the classroom, with cleaning and sanitization and social distancing. So we want to make sure everybody understands where our students are located and we can track and trace. In case that there's a possible, you know, spread on our campuses of COVID. Our continuity of business branch director is Vice Chancellor Tom Bauer. Tom is, the work he has been, he has done has been absolutely astounding. Here are some of the arenas in which he supervises the food distribution, the bookstore mail, civic dining. Student employees fingerprinting and smack, Samantel Athletic Club. And I want to specifically highlight the second harvest food distribution. And currently, as of August 17th, we have served over 7,000 families. 670,000 pounds of food offsetting over a million dollars worth of grocery expenses. I'd like everybody to hear this because this is very important. Vice Chancellor Bauer is not someone that's been directing it from afar. He has been out in the parking lots in the heat with a mask on, checking in each vehicle that comes in. And so have our presidents and so have our vice presidents and it's something that they feel very viscerally about. And they're very passionate about providing this very important resource for the people that are not able to. Even have their own groceries. Next, we have our facilities branch director, Michelle Rosky. And she's really the conduit to our operations center within all of the branches. Because without all of the work that the facilities team does, none of this would be possible. And you will be able to see that in our next slide. They are responsible for the physical space assessment, so each physical space has to be assessed before any type of instructional work. Occurs within that space, decontamination, if there's any type of COVID case in there. The groundskeeping and communication is, has always taken place, but it needs to be absolutely exponentially. Perfected during COVID operations. Signage for social distancing requirements, all of our contractors and consultants and our sanitization is ran through her branch. She is a tireless worker and she is kind of the boat that all of us are floating in within the operations section. Public safety and access, our branch director is Chief Bill Woods and our access group supervisor is Brian Tupper. Together, they look out for the overall safety of the campus. They are the one that from the very time you come onto the campus, where the, where the signage is set up. To getting the students to class safely and then getting them home safely. And it's absolutely imperative that everybody knows the great work that they have been doing as well. Not only with their follow through, but with their flexibility and making sure that all of our operations are sound and safe. Like I said, they have access, they have enforcement, they also are trained first responders. They've been all trained in CPR and in COVID responses. And they're also helping usher in the food distributions as well with traffic enforcement. Our health branch director is Raymond Hernandez and he is actually our third health branch director within the emergency operations center. And he has been a huge lift to the emergency operations center. Ray's job is to manage contact investigations within the district. So if there's a positive COVID case, he's going to be our liaison to county health or public health department. And working with them to make sure that there is no future spread within the district. He also manages our personal protective equipment, our health protocols. So all patient care records and making sure that we're HIPAA compliant and that. We take care of our student, staff and faculty on a personal level. For him, he's incredibly professional, but he really has a touch with working with our district community and it's admirable to watch him work. Domon is our IT branch director and the work that. His, he and his team have been doing have been making it possible for all of this to occur. Because as everybody knows, we are most in a distant learning modality. And so without the infrastructure that he set up for the delivery of the systems. And whether it's technology distribution or whether it's the systems themselves, it has been second to none. And his teams have been out there on the front lines. Face to face with people coming on to campus that need their help and they have been absolute. A pleasure to work with and and tireless workers as well. Manuel Perez is our director of student services. He's our branch director within the emergency operations center. And all, everything else within operations falls within his side of the house. So our disability resource centers, our psychological services, transportation, financial aid, veterans affairs, Spark Point, our transcript evaluations. Our compliance related investigations and our physical space assessments are paired with our facilities crew to make sure that. Our students are taken care of in an equitable manner. Moving over to a different section, Yanely Colito is our logistics sections chief. She handles the supply service, our contracts and support for the emergency operations center for our COVID-19 response. And I'd like to give you some idea of some of the inventory that the district has. We've received over 1.16 million surgical masks for our campus communities. Over 12,000 hand sanitizers. Thousands of facial, I don't want to go on and on and on. But what Yanely has been able to manage, everything from contracts to the PPE that's needed for the personnel within our district has been absolutely seamless. Bernada Slater is our, our finance branch chief, our, our finance sections chief. And Bernada is in charge of procurement and making sure that all time is accounted for, all costs. Are tabulated and that we manage compensation and claims during our COVID response. In essence, nothing can be purchased through COVID unless it goes through Yanely's section and Bernada's section within the emergency operations center. This is me, I'm the incident commander and the EOC director. More or less, I'm just a conductor with everybody in the EOC. All, I would say 99% of the work is done by the personnel in the EOC. In the sections and the branches and I just stand back and try to stay out of their way, which sometimes I have a little trouble with. But my job is just to make sure that the policy group and the EOC is completely aligned with the mission at hand, which is. Our continuity of business, instruction and safety. And as Chancellor Claire stated in the beginning. We have, as of August 5th, just as the people that I've mentioned for you, a total of 16,740 hours dedicated to COVID. And to give you some idea of those hours, all of the people that are working in the emergency operations center are not emergency managers or emergency management coordinators. They are professionals that have a whole other job assignment as well. So not only are they managing the COVID response, but they're also doing all of their other work at the same time. And it's been extremely humbling as an emergency manager to work with all of them. And I've worked in as a first responder for over 20 years. And every day is incredibly humbling for me and it's been a learning experience for me to watch. People from all over the district come together as a team and work incredibly seamlessly. And that's not to say that we have not had gaps, but it has been one of the most seamless operations that I've ever seen. And I've been on major events in the state of California and I just want to convey to the board. That the people that you have working for you are incredibly impressive. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ben and Ben is incredibly humble. We would be in a world of hurt without this, this, without Ben's guidance. He is truly an expert. I'm not spending a lot of time checking around about other districts and and where they're at. But I have to tell you, I think, you know, we have a response that's completely together. Certainly, we make adjustments as we go. Just the incident today, already having the EOC stood up, we were able to make a decision and a recommendation frankly to the board quite quickly. Factoring in everything, including the fact that we're operating in a COVID environment. And we had to take our checkpoints down for the safety of our public safety officers. I hadn't even thought of that and it was the collective group that came to that conclusion. So Ben, terrific job and we're open to your questions before I leave. And I indicated this to you before, I'll be working, we'll be working with the academic senate and our collective bargaining groups. We will be coming with a recommendation to the board sometime in September. Because we frankly need to start thinking about the spring 2021 semester. You can see the incredible planning that needs to occur and we're going to need some direction for the board sooner rather than later about the next couple of months. And with that, we're open to your questions or comments. President Schwartz, I think you're muted.
That's why I don't do it. Okay, Vice President Neres, go ahead.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for that report. The last time we heard about what was going on, we actually were meeting, I guess, down at CSM and we got an update. But this, this really is quite impressive and I, and I'm very grateful for everyone's efforts. Over and above all the things that you do just regularly just to make this a better place for our students. But this is, this is really incredible work to keep us moving in this environment in a safe and appropriate way. So thank you.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes. Thanks, Ben and Aaron, for the presentation, but also on the entire EOC. For the added workload that you've taken on to ensure that our students and faculty are taken care of. I appreciate. I appreciate it and, you know, hopefully we get through this and we'll be able to see each other face-to-face, but until then, thank you.
Absolutely. Let's see, anybody else want to say anything? No? Excellent report. You really put everything into perspective. You hear about it, but it was really great to actually see it zip by and those numbers are incredible. I compliment you all. If you talk around and listen to other districts, they're really struggling with a lot of the things and I have to say, I'm going to say your team that you had from the very beginning just got up and went and put everything in place and you admit there's some hiccups along the way, but you seem to get through them and go on. So compliments to all of you. It's going to be here for a while. It seems like we have a lot of different, every day I keep telling the chancellor, put your tap shoes on. It seems like every day we have some new disaster to talk about, but maybe just wait here, 2020. Anyway, anybody else on the board or anybody want to comment before we move on?
Just, yeah, I had you, I've been watching and listening, but I had everything turned off. Thank you to the entire team. First of all, thank you for the report. It's a very good, comprehensive report. And I want to thank everybody on our team for rising to the occasion. And, you know, we know we've got terrific administrators and employees and this is an example of, you know, being there beyond the call of duty and thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, I think we will move on to the next agenda item if everybody's ready, which is what? Twenty-eight five C, update on the board request for policy relating to solicitation of campaign support from vendors by district staff with trustee elections. Chancellor Claire, you will open up this report, please.
Sure, thank you, thank you, President Schwartz. And this is in response to the request by the board for staff to look into a policy or develop a policy for exactly what the title says. And before I turn it over for your questions, and we do have Josh Morrison from AALRR who gave us some legal advice, I just want to state that although we may not have a policy at this point, I can tell you that as the CEO of this district, my commitment to all of you is to remain neutral in elections. It's not the job of the administration to get involved with, with elections. We do have a role to provide information to candidates and we're happy to do that. We enjoy meeting with potential candidates and it's nice to see that we have a robust field of candidates running for the election in November. I recognize that's just my word and, you know, you'd be nice to see some policy to back that up, but I just want to let you know that my commitment to you is, and I speak for the staff, we, it's not our role to be, to take any position as, as an administrator on these elections. With that, we did consult with Josh Morrison at AALRR and I believe I sent his legal brief to all of you for your review. And I think I'll turn it over to Josh to sort of walk us through the considerations, if that's okay with you, Josh.
Sure.
If not, we, and then we can open it up, your questions, but the punchline is we don't feel that we have the legal grounds to actually establish such a policy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh and he can kind of walk you through the rationale.
Thank you.
Sure, there's, there's two items really that I want to highlight. First is there's some Supreme Court, California Supreme Court case law. And then second is there's some restrictive language in the education code. And the first provides a little bit of a background for, for the second. We've got some 40-year-old California Supreme Court case law that's still good, that essentially says that campaign contributions are strongly encouraged, there's a strong public policy in favor of those, and they don't create an appearance of unfairness or propriety. There are some restrictions that do show up in various provisions of law. Under Government Code 1090, which is the main conflict of interest law, there are, you can sort of cross the, cross the line if you are essentially trading contributions for a vote. But to get there, you really need to be, you know, doing something that really you'd have a, you know, a clear idea was unlawful at the time, yet you did it. The line's really, you know, kind of that far. With that in mind, the education code has some restrictions. They're pretty strict in terms of what kind of a policy you can adopt. There's a section in the education code that deals with political activities of school officers and employees. It's Education Code 7050 and a few sections on from there. And what it says is that you can adopt a policy that limits political activities on district property or on work time. And if that's all it said, then I think we would probably be okay expanding and adding different items. But what it also says is that except as otherwise provided in this article, so those two provisions and, you know, there's some other things discussed as well, or as required by federal law, no restrictions shall be placed on political activities of an officer or employee of a local agency. So that language seems pretty, pretty strict. I think the idea is that with this strong public policy in favor of political contributions, with the idea that that public policy is essentially required by the First Amendment, that the legislative preference is to not get districts in the business of adopting additional restrictions that might, might easily kind of cross those lines and then hinge on First Amendment freedoms. There are some, as I mentioned, you can violate Government Code Section 1090 if you're trading contributions for a vote. There's potential, you know, there's potential to commit the crime of bribery if you're engaged in similar conduct. There's also restrictions in the Political Reform Act. We don't see that there's a real, that there's a viable basis to add additional policy in light of that education code language.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh. Board members, any questions?
Yes. Well, thank you for that report and for that legal memo. And as I read the legal memo, excuse me, you're saying that our district as our local government agency or local school board is actually prohibited by state law from adopting any additional restrictions on campaign solicitation during non-work time, non-work phone lines, emails, et cetera, that we are actually prohibited by state law from adopting such a local ordinance, so to speak, for our district. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there comments about this item? Okay, thank you, Josh, for the memo and then explaining it to us in person. We appreciate, appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good day.
So we are down to correspondence. I don't really have anything unless anybody wants to add anything to favor sake. Statements from board members, anybody want to have a statement? Has anybody been doing anything exciting? Trustee Menager?
I don't want to jump in line if you have an order that you're going to go down here, whatever.
No, just don't let me forget our student trustee, because I don't know if she's here or there.
I hope she's here, but I'll just lead off very quickly.
There she is, yes.
Again, interesting times that we live in and it was an interesting opening day unlike none other, but I think it went off very well and I think, you know, 700 attendees might be actually a new record, so. Yeah. Especially wanted to compliment President Schwartz on your comments. I thought were very well done and President Claire, I think your statement of those revisions and goals for the next year was well done, so.
Sure, thanks.
Well, we, while we missed, you know, having our coffee and muffins with our colleagues in the lobby of the theater, I think it was, you know, we each had our own coffee on our own, I guess, but virtually we got together for a good opening day. So welcome back, everyone. And this, you know, here's hoping that we have a good year together and we accomplish a lot for our students in terms of helping them achieve their educational goals and accomplish their dreams and visions of where they want to get to in some fairly difficult times. Speaking of which, I just say thank you to everyone for, here we go again, dealing with yet another emergency crisis situation with the smoking-related shutdown of the campuses. So it's just, you never know what's going to happen next and here we go again and every day is a new challenge. And thank you to all of the administrators and faculty and staff and all of our students for your flexibility. And as I've told several people so far this year, I think you're going to have to have resilience, adaptability, and probably a good sense of humor to make it through this year in good shape. So here we go and, and good luck to everyone and then let's, let's have as good a year as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board members, do I have any comments or statements at this time? One, two, three. Okay. I will just say, oh, Jay, see, I almost did it. Where'd you go?
There she is.
Back to the Bahamas before I even could say goodbye.
I'm happy to be starting another semester.
No, I think I'm okay.
Something that I'm working on right now is trying to get all of my AS officers.
Tom, mute yourself. Go ahead, Jay, would you repeat that? Trustee Nurse was in the way.
I'm saying something that I'm working on is trying to get all of the AS officers from all three campuses together for DSC soon, hopefully within the next few weeks.
Very good. I hope you can accomplish that. I mean, it's, it's our new world of Zooming. As we said, you know, 719 people that tuned in for the opening day. Is that recorded, the opening day, or since, so public people could look on our website? Is that where it is? I'm looking to somebody answer.
You know, we certainly can post it. We, I, we do have the recording and we, I can work with our staff to post it. I watched it just to, just so I remember what I said I was going to do this year. So, yeah. So we will definitely post it.
It's a good recap. I say that because you really made some very good, good comments and some positive, positive statements for the future and I think it's a good guideline to go by. So that's good. And okay, any other board members? We have Jay, anybody else want to say anything? I will just say that I was able to attend the general session for facilities. I was happy that they invited me to that and it was, what an uplifting afternoon to see them get their end of the year awards and hear all about the accolades and the perfect attendance and all the hard work that they do, which we know that they do, but it's so nice to see them get appreciated and on Zoom. So they really had, they had a wonderful time. Anybody else? I neglected to say at the opening of the meeting that I hope the board would agree that I would like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Linda Salzer. She had retired from Skyline College many years ago, but she will never be forgotten as a president and as being in the district for I don't even know how many years, actually. So many of the programs, I'm sure, Dr. Marino, you might find you'll hear, were started by her, continued by her. And not only was she a wonderful president, she was a fantastic artist and a lot of fun and always saw the bright side to everything, if what I understand from her family, up until the very end, she was still that same Linda. So she is going to be dearly missed. So with board's permission, would you like to adjourn in her memory?
Read.
Okay. Anybody want to make any final comments? I think you're ready to go back to closed session.
Yes, and I sent you all a text. We'll just, for the board members, we'll just use the link that I had sent you earlier for the closed session. We'll just get right back on that when you're ready.
Very good, okay.
Can I just ask, Micah, could you reset, could you resend the link?
Sure, sure.
I don't like to keep these things too long, I already deleted it.
Okay, happy to do that.
Thank you.
So our next meeting of this board will be a special study session conducted by Zoom on September the 3rd. But the next regular meeting of the board will be September 9th, also conducted by Zoom. Let's say the same thing, our attendance with Zoom is much more than we've ever had in person, so I think there's a lot to be said for that. The 719, that's what I want to finish with. I hope that you can, look at that, there has never been an attendance for opening day like that because there's no facility on campus, the campuses to handle that many people. So how wonderful that people could, we always struggled, some of them classified and the ASME staff struggled to come to it because they couldn't get off work, but they managed to hopefully find a few minutes to tune in. So I would certainly hope that that continues in this type of a format or something close to that. So we will now go back to closed session and see, hear the rest of our general meeting back in September. Thank you. Leave this meeting. Bye, 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 bye.
Bye, good night.
Good night.